Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, December 5th at exactly 6:00 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez Artega.
Here.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Mayor Canning.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Dunsford is absent.
Thank you very much. If you'd all please stand and join us with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Post-tracta parade. Hopefully, everyone had a good time. We will start with oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes maximum so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. I have three speaker cards in front of me, which I'll start with, and if there's anyone after that that would like to address the council under oral communication, you are welcome to do so. I do believe some folks are here regarding water rates. Please understand that we cannot comment on your comments relative to the water rate because it is a non-agendized item until January 2nd as required by Proposition 218 under California state law. So with that said, the first speaker card I have is Karen Chang. Karen, should you so choose, please share with us your name and your address, but you are not required to do so.
Good evening. I'm Karen Chang, 367 Myrtle Dale Road. Honorable members, city council members, good evening. I'm sure you've all heard this one. If you get called for jury duty and you want to change your time, you request the time between Thanksgiving and Christmas, then you'll probably get off scot-free.
Gosh, I wish I knew that a few years ago.
Hasn't worked for me yet.
Oh, well, oh, you've tried it. Okay. So it so happens that all the events leading up to January 2nd are right around Thanksgiving all the way to Christmas. The first meeting was at a council meeting, it was November 7th, and that was right after the fire. Not directly after, but I guarantee you, a lot of people were still traumatized and feeling dislocated. I have it still in my calendar there that there was a city council meeting, and I looked at it and I said, "Water," but it went right over my head. So we have to disregard that. Now, the notifications got mailed out and we received them just before Thanksgiving. And the public hearing and the decision will be made January 2nd, right after the holiday. So if I were cynical, I said, "You planned this." But I let that slide. What concerns me is that in the previous rate increase, which was September 7th, 2010, two years later, there was another increase after that because you weren't getting sufficient funds. However, we had several public meetings, which were informational meetings, where people could come and question and ask about the document. And I think we need that time so that we can discuss it among ourselves, because I'm talking to people around, and they're saying one thing. And I said, "No, that's not what I'm reading in the document." So I think there's some confusion that should be put to rest. And so I'm asking that we have a public forum other than the January 2nd meeting, where the public can be invited, and they can come with all the questions about the proposal. There are a couple other things, and this has directly to do with the method in which we do things, not with the proposal itself or the rates. St. Helena, just on the 27th of November.
You're at three minutes right now, Karen.
Oh, okay. Passed one. But they passed one where they modified the rate. Up to now, you know, we've never modified anything though. And the other thing is, can we make it a little easier? Could we have just an insert on the proposal where people can sign it and send it in? Some people find it hard to compose a letter and send it out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for clarification, we are, just for clarification, the earliest we can have the hearing is January 2nd, but it does not require us to make a decision on January 2nd. So that's the beginning of the process, and this council has stated previously that we would be open to community forums after that as well. So there isn't any sense of urgency in terms of, on the 2nd, we will say yea, no, or maybe. That's just when we have to start the process. In terms of the timing, and it's a good thing you're not cynical, Prop 218 by the State of California has a very, very strict language and timeline. So that's just part of the process we're going through. But again, this council has demonstrated its interest and ability to continuing and doing informal community hearings as well in January. So it's not anywhere in cement or stone that on January 2nd, we say yea, no, or maybe. Okay? Just as a clarification.
Yes, but in the past, it was not just at the council meeting.
That's where a community forum would be an option for us in January as well. Okay? Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Hughes. Please share with us your name and address, should you so choose.
Hi, my name is Thomas Hughes. I live at 2412 Foothill Boulevard, and I'm in space 125 here in town. I'm here to talk about water. I'm just going to read my statement, and I'll give the recorder a copy. I did not receive a notice about the quality of the water in Calistoga, and I didn't receive a notice about the water increases. I live in Rancho de Calistoga with a master meter system. That means that the master meter in the organization charges the units, and they get the billing, and they get the information. Only the owners of that property receive notices, which I just said. Our owners have not and do not inform citizens of Calistoga living in Rancho de Calistoga about issues of this nature. This should be grounds for a complete review of the business license system so that the names of the residents are also included to receive information, even though they aren't of the address only. In the future, the business licensees of the master meter system must be required to provide all communications from the city to their residents as a key aspect of their obtaining a yearly city license. If these Calistoga licensees fail to pass along City of Calistoga water notices or other notices, something like a $10,000 fine should be leveled for failure to comply with this new business license requirement or something such. As this lack of health and safety communication is unacceptable, especially for frail elderly voting constituents, none of whom have been informed of these issues by these elected Calistoga officials sitting here tonight. This is another item we can add to City Calistoga mobile home owner's bill of rights that I'm trying to promote, that we must develop in Calistoga for people who own a mobile home, because a lot of things are sort of going to slide by for us. Since many City of Calistoga, 30% or more of Calistoga voting residents are seniors, they've not been directly informed by the City of Calistoga about this impending rate increase, nor about the issues surrounding the concerns of the water quality. I'd like to ask the city council to reconsider, and I hear what the mayor said, and that might be a good plan, to have a few listening enterprises around the neighborhoods. Said action must be suspended, I think, though, until we do that, and let this large water, let the large water consumers in Calistoga pay the rate increases instead of the local seniors who comprise nearly 30% of voters. This should be a part of the fee for their right to harvest dollars from the community guests who visit this town because of us, the local community of people living here, and the wholesomeness offered by all the citizens of this town. That's why people come here. It may be a time to develop a Calistoga municipal board or commission set up separately from the council to oversee municipal-type issues like perhaps a solar power agency and so on. So that's my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Your point is well made, that it is the responsibility of the, Thomas. It is the responsibility of the park owner to inform their tenants. What we can look into, City Manager Feek, is what leverage we have over those owners to ensure that they're doing so, to pass that on. No, you should actually, they should be copying you on the notices on that. All right. Next up, I have a speaker card from Yvonne Henry.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for doing what you do for the city. Yvonne Henry, 1907 Cedar Street. So I'm here about the water. I do think there are more questions. I realize that you cannot answer any questions. I do have questions about the documents, so an opportunity to ask these and have them answered would be something I'd be interested in. In terms of the water, I hear the community is talking a lot, very specifically, about these issues, and they're more informed than I am. So alas, they're not here, and I have no idea why. But they could use more input because they have better questions than I do. Specifically, what I can say is that for us, for my husband and myself, I already pay an extra fee because he will not drink Calistoga tap water. He says it stinks. Okay? There's nothing in this report that says that these recommendations would address the water. I mean, it really is putrid on weekends, you know, and it's not a good PR situation for a tourist town. The other element that I hear people talking about is that there's, the flat rate does not promote conservation. You know, we all need, we know where we live, we know what the challenges are. We all need to be savvy about conservation, and a flat rate does not promote that. So there are other questions, and I realize you can't answer them, but my point is, this is a huge increase, and there's a history here, and we need to be talking about it before we make a decision, and that's what I'd like to ask the city council to do. Thank you.
And that opportunity will be provided starting January 2nd. Thank you. Next, I have Carrie Abreu.
God, there's so many segues into what I have to say. Carrie Abreu, 1720 Reynard Lane. First off, I want to thank Dylan that there's finally lights on the bridge, and I see that Michael Dunsford's not here tonight, but one night, I witnessed him and his girlfriend have to jump out of the way because that crosswalk was so darn dark, in the rain, at 6:00 at night, which I wrote you a letter about because someone's going to get killed there, and then the city's going to have a big issue on their hands, but I'm glad there's finally lights there. The second thing I want to say is, so when Silver Rose came to the City of Calistoga and presented their project to do their development, if I remember correctly, there was a huge guarantee to the citizens of Calistoga that because of development fees that were going to be input into this town, that that was going to ensure that the water rates weren't going to jack because the infrastructure was going to be taken care of between two huge developments and development fees that were coming in here. If I'm wrong, I didn't have time to go home, but I believe I still have the paperwork before it went to a referendum, and during the referendum, part of that was the problem, like, so what are they going to do to help us? They're not paying TOT on any of their homeowners' association houses, but they're going to impact our infrastructure, and yet, there's no answers, and they're building, and now we're getting our water rates raised. My biggest thing tonight is the fact that a year ago, November, I believe it was the 14th or 11th, and I might have my dates confused, water was tested in this town on December. So if it was the 11th that was tested in November, it came back on the 14th, the results. This city citizens weren't notified till the 9th of February. This year, the water's tested, it has too much HAA in it. This year, the water's tested on August 9th, and the letter did not go out to us as citizens till, I didn't get it in my mailbox till the 17th of November. Okay, I've had cancer. I've had cancer. I don't want cancer because there's too much HAA in our city water system. And the fact that the negligence of sending, if you guys got the results on the 11th, then how come we all didn't get it the next week? How did we, why do we have to wait three months to get results about what's in the water? I got a 19-year-old cat, I told somebody at my shop. I don't even want to give my cat tap water. I mean, I think we're all, we are the ones that keep this city going when there aren't people staying in the hotels, and when there aren't people eating at the restaurants. We're doing that to try and maintain, but we deserve some consideration. I just, I feel like everybody's catered to what the development can happen in Calistoga and the progress, but what you're doing is leaving a lot of us behind that are integral in making sure that this community stays going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have, I don't have any more speaker cards. Is there anyone else who wants to address the council on any topic that is not on the agenda? Yes, please. Please share with us your name and your address, if you so choose, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Jerry Hansen, out at Chateau Calistoga. Some of the things that Carrie was talking about are much a concern for me as well. The implication that I received when these developments were being proposed and before they went to referendum and et cetera was that our water woes were, I think, would be a thing of the past. And if it wasn't stated exactly, again, it was implied, which swayed a lot of people to vote for bringing those developments in. But more to the point now, I want to discuss this situation about the master meters within the parks. I can't speak for the other parks in terms of the numbers of homes, but in our park, there are 198 homes, I think. Most of them are, many of them are double occupancy. We're all water users. We all pay for water, and if we only get, if our park only gets one vote per park, and I don't necessarily mean a vote, but I understand that we can submit letters, and if so many letters are received, it will have an impact on the decision or what's going to happen with the water rates. I think that we're not being represented properly as residents, as water fee-paying residents, and it just does not feel constitutional. And I mean that in the broadest sense. It's a lack of representation. So I'd really like to see that addressed in a different way, and then also, and if I'm misunderstanding, if somebody would correct me about that, I would really appreciate it. The other thing is that I, as Karen had mentioned, and you've indicated that there was going to be more time, we need some city forums and such about this so that we can all be up to speed on what's happening and have an educated input. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on any non-agendized item? Yes, please share with us your name and your address. Thank you.
I'm Charlotte Williams, and I live at 59 View Road. This is news to me, what I've heard tonight, that the residents of the mobile home parks don't seem to have representation when it comes to things like being notified about water quality or water rate changes. That they, it's really amazing to me because most of those voters, the people who live in those parks, are the people who vote regularly. They're not just a third of the voters in town. They're a third of the voters who vote the most often, most people over 55. And that they aren't being notified because all of them are people who voted for the five council people. Those people really need your representation. They, you know, they deserve it, and I think it's an incredible shame on the council that you haven't made sure that those people are getting those notices. I don't know what it would take to put something in the mail to them instead of relying on the mobile home park owner to do that. That's pretty awful. And also, I'd like to bring up that, you know, when it comes to water rates, okay, so that's one issue, wastewater is another. But I believe that the City of Calistoga was involved in a court order upon the spa owners to meter and monitor and meter their effluent, presumably because that is where most of the boron-laden water comes from that goes to the wastewater treatment plant, and what makes Calistoga wastewater so difficult to treat, and what I think at this point makes it impossible to sell to neighboring vineyards because of the amount of boron in it. That seems like that could be a source of income, metering, monitoring, having the spas, the businesses that profit off of this town, have them pay for that wastewater treatment, and also for the city to be able to sell that treated wastewater to neighboring vineyards, a source of income. So those are two issues. And it is, it is really interesting that this water rate increase would come up after so much promotion, so strongly, that these developments were going to take care of us. And, you know, I heard somebody say they paid millions and millions of dollars, but it doesn't really matter how much the developers paid in fees. If they didn't pay enough to make sure that the residents of Calistoga are not having to subsidize those businesses, that is a huge problem. The citizens of this town, the voters, did not vote for any of you believing that they were going to be subsidizing anybody else's business, profit-making business. So that needs to be addressed, and it would be very good if there were multiple meetings so that the voters in this town, if not all the citizens who drink the water, can address you about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? All right. I will close oral communication. I'll make a couple of final points for, just for clarification. Regarding the metering situation and under Prop 18, California state law for a public utility, as you guys, as most of you already know, the city operates a separate entity, the Enterprise Fund, which is a public utility, which is the water and sewer. Under state law, the representation of the meter, the rate payers, is determined by the meters. I would be not, I would not be opposed to having everybody be able to vote on this, but under state public utility law, the rate payer is what pays. So the situation that we have in the mobile home parks, in terms of how they're represented vote-wise, I understand. Regarding the notification of the mobile home, mobile park owners not getting to each of the residents, that's something we certainly can address, if not with them, perhaps even directly to the rate payers, I should say, to the residents of the parks. Regarding the developments, when we have the public hearing, starting on January 2nd, and we'll have whatever it takes to get through that, we will share, as we do everything with our financials very transparently, exactly what money has been collected from them to this date, where those funds have gone, and the offsets of capital improvements, et cetera. And just as a clarification, and I can reference exactly what meetings, at what time on the video, you can see, our statements have always been, once they are up and running, paying water and sewer rates as customers, as you would, and as we do, that's when rates would stabilize. The unfortunate situation is prior to their existence, and even if they never existed, we have a system that has 80-year-old pipes, whether it be water or sewer throughout, that we're all addressing. So again, beginning on January 2nd, we will share all the information we have. If by January 2nd, we don't, after January 2nd, we don't think that's enough information and people are more interested, please, we'll open up to a community forum, less formal than a council meeting as such, and we will continue that process as we've done a good job of doing in the last several years. What I can say, though, is it can't be a series of 22 meetings, as we experienced with our first rate increases going back some five or six years ago. So look for those dates in the paper, starting on January 2nd, and we will do as many of these as it takes for the vast majority of you to get comfortable. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, I'll seek adoption of the meeting agenda as presented unless other modifications are required or requested.
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. I have a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Artega.
Yes, I want to mention very quick about a letter that came in one of our local papers this week about the closing of the Vermile Clinic and losing our local doctor, Janet Williams, who is providing a great service to our town. In the letter, they say that us, as council members, we have part on that decision, and I just want to clarify that because I never hear anything until when it's already down. I think this has, this is a private organization that is doing that, and which is Adventist Health, and we as a council member, so the city, we have nothing to do with that. So just want to clarify that.
Yeah, you are correct. We've had meetings with Olay Health and with Adventist Health. The situation with the private medical provider that's currently under Adventist Health, that's a separation between a private entity, the doctor, and the hospital. What we have been informed about, and we were hoping they would have perhaps done a better job of informing the public to this point, is there is a uniting between Adventist Health and Clinical Olay for a new medical facility, or I should say refurbished medical facility at the site of the Vermile and the current Clinical Olay. So what we can communicate and share from those two organizations, Adventist Health and Olay, is that we will not be left without medical providers. It's just a matter of those two organizations working out their, for lack of a better word, merger. But the departure of the current physician is a business situation between that organization. We have made it very clear to the CEO of Adventist Health that there could be far better communication in the community and to those patients of that particular physician on how they're going to rectify and cover this situation. But moving forward in the very short term, you will see some announcements in partnership of Adventist and Olay on a new facility and a new operation in Calistoga. So rest assured there will still be coverage here in the city. And if you are a member of Adventist Health, it wouldn't hurt you to call them and let them know that they could be communicating a little bit better to those in this community that they service. But thank you.
Thank you. Awesome.
Councilmember Barnes.
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes, I received the same notice that everybody else did that's a rate payer in the city, and it really could have been better. I realize that it met all of the requirements of Prop 218, but I think that it missed the mark on justification and explaining exactly what the fee was going to be in, let's call it, plain English. You can look at the spreadsheets, and we have spreadsheets up the kazoo about how the water rates work. However, it needs to be boiled down into plain English so that people can see exactly where the money came from up to this point, where that money went to, what money is needed for things like replacing pipes that are 80 years old, where the decision to leave the tiered structure came from. It's a court decision, but I think that that court decision should be cited in our notice. There's probably seven or eight factors that went into helping to determine what those rates should be to be fully rates should be to be fully, to have a fully funded system. So I think quite clearly, we need to do a much better job on communicating this to our constituents so that they can make their viewpoint known. And other than that, I really can't say because we'd be getting into probably some areas that we're not allowed to at this point. But the points that were brought up by the speakers are well taken by myself and I certainly would volunteer to be at any of those public forums, myself having been on the committee that came up with those and certainly listen to the public and see what we can do. I have been approached, when we announced the rate study and everything, I've been approached by not as many people as I thought I would be, probably three or four so far. And when I kind of explain it to them, they may not like the rate increase, but at least they understand a little bit better the effort and what some of the components are. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you to the entire community, the city staff as well, police, fire, public works, city staff, for your assistance and cooperation with executing the 22nd Annual Calistoga Lighted Tractor Parade, especially your patience this year and the fact that we had a route modification. We did have to go down Washington Street as a result of the Berry Street Bridge, not the Lincoln Avenue Bridge. The crowd estimate for this year comes in at about 16,000. We did no marketing or advertising for this event because we knew the route was going to be modified to try to keep the crowds down, but I think this is a word-of-mouth event that everyone wants to be a part of. So it went off very well and we thank everyone again for their participation, if you participated, your contribution if you sponsored, and your patience if you were caught in traffic at any of those points. The good news is the route will return to its normal place next year because Berry Street Bridge is supposed to be open by the
Allegedly.
Allegedly supposed to be open the first week of February, which still gives us a lot of cushion between the first week of February and the first of December next year. Again, that's the Berry Street Bridge. The Lincoln Avenue Bridge will not be ready anywhere near next December. So thank you all for that. City Manager's report. City Manager Feek.
Yes, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll take a few moments to comment on just some of the things that I've heard here tonight and provide the best response that I can at this point. The first thing I want to point out is the issue of the, what I'll call the water quality notices. This was the first, it's been brought to my attention, that not all the residents within a mobile home park was receiving the notice. If that is the case, I'm certainly concerned of that, so we'll be looking into that. One thing I do want to point out is that when we do testing, we do daily testing, we do monthly testing, this is both on the water system as well as the wastewater system. There are things that we have to report back to the state, there are things that have to be tested, there are things that are, you know, samples coming and going, there's a lot of work that goes into it. And so, you know, there's no expectation on our end that we do a test one day and then we know the results that day and can provide notice. So a lot of times, there is going to be a delay. I don't know how long that is. Certainly, it's not our intention to be withholding any information or to not share anything that we know. Once we know something, it's been documented, verified, you know, we tested high in this part of town, then we send appropriate notices immediately. So I'll be talking with Mike Kern, Public Works Director, and we'll take a look at what happened based on some of the comments we've heard tonight and make sure that we don't have any issues related to the process for notifying people. That would be a primary concern for us. One thing that I just want to point out as well about the timing of this, I've heard, it almost seemed like people were alluding to the fact we're trying to hit a holiday season for the timing of the rate stuff. I'll be very candid, you know, my thought process when we started this was our existing rates go until December 2017. And by January 1, if we don't have a plan in place, then the rates just continue the way they are. So we backed into that date. The original meetings were scheduled to happen in early October and because of timing and people who could be here, we pushed it back a week. And of course, we all know the Tubbs Fire happened and then everything got delayed. I certainly didn't want to be bringing rate information to the city council while the town was evacuated. That would have been even worse. So we just pushed it back appropriately. And now here we are, you know, six weeks' notice, that gives time for us to notify as many people as we can. Then we start public hearings, we have a lot of documentation. Soon, we're going to have a large analysis, that's a 70-page document of everything we've considered that's available. We try and crank out as much information as we can.
Which is why I said we want something in plain language.
And plain language, you know, so we're creating even more information upon request, responses to answers. If people, if you have questions specific to you, to how it affects you, you can contact me, you can contact, I'll get our analysts on the hook and we'll see what is their specific question, provide an answer. Doesn't it even have to be at a city council setting? So I just want to make that clear as well, that from a timing perspective, it just, it happened this way, there is no obligation of the city council to make any definitive decision on January 2nd. Mayor, you said that earlier, I want to make sure that that's very clear. If you want to have, that's the first public hearing, you can't consider anything until you hold that public hearing. And after that, if you want to hold 50 public hearings or no more.
That we don't want to do.
I'm just saying that's your prerogative. Prop 218 says you have to wait 45 days and then you have to hold a public hearing and then the rest you can do. The last few items that I want to mention, unfortunately, it was dark when we all came here tonight, but if you were to look at the new outside of the building, it is a different color than we've seen for the last several years. I think it looks very nice, so hopefully everybody gets a chance to come by during the daytime because I think at least the outside looks a little bit better than it did before. And then the last item that I want to mention is today, we received a request for Engine 419 to go down to Los Angeles area. I'm not sure which fire they're responding to, but we're able to go and support many other departments which supported us during our own recent fires. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dylan, do we know which firefighters we sent?
I do not, I do not know. The chief obviously does, but he did not tell me when I got the word.
Thank you. We were going to do a service award to Chief Selaya, but he's not able to be here tonight, so we'll push that to the next available meeting. With that said, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless any item is requested to be pulled.
I would like to pull item number six.
Item number six. Anyone else?
I agree with that.
All right.
Item seven, also, please.
And item seven, all right. With that understood, I would entertain a motion to pass all items excluding six and seven.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Barnes, we have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. Councilmember Barnes, please address number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions about, not the amount of money or the fact that it is due or the fact that
Sorry, let me just, for the benefit of the public, item number six is consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a payment plan agreement for connection fees in the amount of $35,876.21 between the city of Calistoga and Bob Beck. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution, sorry, Councilmember Barnes, go ahead.
Thank you. I have no problem with what is being requested, nor the fact that we are going to stretch out the payments for approximately three years, approximately $1,000 a month for three years. I want to have a clarification that the owner of the property, which is Mr. Beck, will be responsible for it and that the rentor of the property, which is Buster's Barbecue, will work out whatever they're going to work out with Bob Beck. And I'm assuming that's how that goes. But more to the point, in the report, we are talking about the last three years, 15, 16, and 17, but it makes reference to the years 11 to 14. What happened then was this same scenario in effect, almost double of the water usage. Number two, do we have a mechanism at City Hall or at the Public Works Department or the Water Department, wherever, to check these averages? If so, what happened that we missed 11 through 14? And what happened that only because somebody pulled a permit did we find out about the last three years and come to find out they owe us about $36,000? What happened or what didn't happen? If we, do we have other businesses such as this doing exactly the same things? Do we have a way to monitor all of these businesses to find out if they are in compliance with their agreements with the city? If you have agreed via your contract and your hookup payment to take, say, a third of an acre of water every year and you're actually taking two-thirds, how do we control that? How do we make sure we're getting the right amount? And if we don't, why don't we? The issuance of the building permit seems to have triggered this or because we cannot issue a building permit if there's outstanding fees due to the city. So again, why did it take the issuance or a request for a building permit to find this out and do something about it? Finally, on line 22, it refers to surcharge based on surcharge rates, is where we got to the $36,000. What were the rates that were in effect? What was the surcharge? And how was this calculated? And again, how many other businesses are out there? This pertains only to the business community, and I'm not casting aspersions on the business community, but if there's one, there's liable to be more. Is there a way we can control this better to keep control of our resources, water, which is a vital resource that you've all heard tonight with the comments from our audience? So I would like some of the answers to these questions. City Manager Feek.
You asked about 50 questions, and I'll do my best. I took notes here and I'll do my
You want me to go back one by one?
I'll do my, I'll do my best to, and if you'll indulge me, I'll try and explain from a 35,000-foot view. When a customer, residential, commercial, anyone, comes in and wants to develop a property, they have to purchase into the city's water and wastewater enterprise systems. So they buy, they pay what we call a connection fee. That connection fee buys them a certain amount of resource, water or wastewater, and they, they're able to use that for whatever purpose they have. At the time, they might be doing a restaurant, that restaurant might convert to a, it might be a spa, it might be a multifamily housing unit, it might be something different, it changes over time. That entitlement, if you will, that connection fee stays with that land, it's the property owners, they now own that, so they have this many units of water, this many units of wastewater. That's what a connection fee is. In the city, everyone has to purchase a connection fee, pays a connection fee and purchases amount of water, wastewater. They purchase less for a residential home than they would for a restaurant or any kind of commercial business. Over time, people's behaviors change. So at one point, before a historic drought, people were using more water for things like irrigating their lawns, washing their cars, cleaning their sidewalks. During a drought, behavior changes, now they're scaling back, they're using less water than they were before. The same could be said for a property owner who has three tenants. Now, the first tenant might be a coffee shop, they're making coffee, they're processing a lot of water. Then that coffee shop might leave and it might become a postage packing place, no water going in and out. I'm just demonstrating that the uses change, therefore their needs for water and wastewater change. As a longstanding practice, which goes back multiple, in my terms, multiple city managers, the city has always used a new project or a kind of a redevelopment as a process for when we look at their historic usage and determine if they need to buy more water or wastewater capacity for a residential home, for a commercial business, and we have very few industrial properties, but the same would apply there. When we do that, we look at historic data and we say, what did they, what did this property originally purchase and how much are they currently using? And if there's a difference, then they have to pay that difference. That's the case of the item before you here tonight, and I realize we're not talking about just that one, but you have a property, a business on the property which had been using historically more water and more wastewater than they originally purchased. Therefore, to get a new entitlement, they have to buy more water and wastewater capacity. And that's the time when we do it. We do have code language, which talk, chapter, section 13-16-060, which refers to the monitoring of water and wastewater service. In the code, and I can provide a copy for city council, it says, "When individual and non-residential system use reaches 75% of an established baseline, written notice shall be sent by the director of public works." Item C, "When the baseline allocation for the calendar year is met or exceeded before the year is completed, a written notice to cease and desist within 10 days shall be issued." Item D, I won't continue on, but just for reference, 13-16-060, you could read for your reference. What's codified in our ordinance has not been the city's practice for many years. We've not sent those notices, we've not told people, hey, cease and desist your water or your wastewater consumption or be subject to fine. That hasn't happened. What we've done, as I said before, is when they come in and someone wants to expand a use or change a use, that's when we say you have to purchase more water, more wastewater. When Councilmember Barnes asked, are there others that this applies to? The answer is yes, residential and commercial. It will apply to many folks. And in one given year, it might apply to these two business owners, and the next year, it might not. It really just depends on how much water they have, from a, or how much water they're using. From a process and a, I guess I'd call it a policy-making decision, I don't know that the way we do it is the most effective, I'm not sure what the most effective way is. It would be very difficult to come to a business owner one year and say, you need to purchase more water, so they purchase more water, and then the next year, they're using less, and then the city refund them that money, which we've already spent for whatever capital upgrade or so on and so forth. So it gets to be very much a challenge in how you balance that.
Just, Dylan, for clarification, though, it's the allotment that they would have to purchase, but for every gallon that they're using, even if it's over what their base rate is, they're paying, so it's, they're paying for the water and the sewage they're using.
Correct. Very good point, Mr. Mayor. So what I'm speaking of is the connection fee only. This is, this is the purchase to buy into the enterprise systems. Then we have our rates, which we talked about earlier. Your rates, you are paying for the water and the wastewater you use regardless. So you, there are no discounts there. But what we try, what we build into those connection fees are things like, you're a new business owner and you're, you want to come into town and build a building, you're going to own a part of our debt, you're going to own a part of the system. We've already built the 50 miles of water lines, the 40 miles of sewer lines, our plants, so we're going to make them pay a portion so that it's not borne by the existing rate payers already.
It's an entry fee, if you will.
Exactly.
Having been around a few more years than the other council people sitting here, this was a discussion a number of years ago with spas particularly that would exceed their baseline. And if memory serves me correctly, we took an average so that if there was an off year that maybe they only had 60% occupancy rate, and the next year was, let's say, 80%, that it might have skewed things in there a little bit, and that if it was a consistent over baseline, then we required them to pay for additional acreage, as I recall.
How did that work out? Or was it ever passed?
I'm not sure. I think that when we started averaging, it came out that pretty much things were in alignment, but the other thing that came out of the rate study that I was on with Dawn is we have certain, everything's done on, based on an acre foot, and we have a certain percentage of an acre foot for each room in a spa and for the spa itself. And then recently, there have been water-saving measures that, you know, lower-flow toilets and like that, that have changed the amounts of water that's used. And I believe that any spas that were exceeding And I believe that any spas that were exceeding their allotment just had to make sure that they started saving water or buying allotment. And I'm not sure which, if any, of them wound up having to buy an additional allotment, but that was quite an extensive discussion when it happened.
Have we had any other cases like the one in front of us tonight? We haven't had one in my recent memory, and I've been sitting here for five years.
We process entitlements very routinely, and not all of those come to city council. So this is one that came to you. The last one that I remember, which came to you a few, you know, good example of one, a year ago, we had the school district. When they did their expansion, they basically, they just cut us a check for a large amount of money, $40,000. And at the same time that they did their project, they implemented some conservation measures. We asked them to try and use less water, less wastewater. And so we just set that money aside, and over a couple of years' time, they were able to demonstrate that they had, in fact, built their new gymnasium, their new buildings, but they also reduced their overall water/wastewater consumption. So we refunded their money. So, I mean, our, you know, I don't want to say our preference, but ultimately, if their behaviors change and they're using less water/wastewater, that's great. That was one, the one that I'm most aware of, but very routinely, planning and building department, every time they issue a permit, we're checking this to make sure that they have enough water/wastewater allocation set aside. Anytime there's an expansion, they have to pay that additional money.
It seems to me that the situation before us is unique. The allocation, I believe, was given when it was a restaurant, and it continues to be a restaurant, so the occupancy hasn't changed. So the allocation was either set way too low or was violated, not violated, but overused during the course of the last six years, and now it's in a catch-up mode. The trigger was the application for a building permit. Is that correct?
It could just be, too, that the restaurant's being much more successful than it was.
Yeah, I'm saying, it's a chain of circumstances which might be normal or it might not be normal, but I think we should have some mechanism somewhere within the wastewater, the water system, to check on this for, especially for businesses. You know, if we have 20, or 2,000 homes in town, they're all going to be about the same, and the connection fees are about the same. Businesses are the ones that seem to vary. And so I think we ought to be checking on it for and against increases or decreases. Is there any way we can get city staff to look into this, to find a mechanism so things like this don't occur in the future? You know, because the owner of the building and the occupant of the building, you know, $36,000, that's a lot of money. And, you know, fortunately, we are in a position, we can finance it interest-free. So maybe we can find a mechanism so that that situation or one like it doesn't come up again. Have staff look into something like that?
I do believe, we have existing language which may help. We also, you know, one of the things we like to do is look at other cities and how they handle a similar approach. You know, we've got counterparts down Valley all across the area. We can look and see what they've done and bring back recommendation to council on how we can, I guess I'd say, be more proactive about making sure that, and in this case, the language of the code refers to non-residential users, about non-residential users, that they're staying true to what they've purchased. If council wants us to look at the residential use as well, I don't know that our current language does that, but I'll take your direction on there.
I don't think residential is a problem. It might be, I don't think so. But I think as Ms. Williams pointed out tonight, that's the backbone of the community, the business interests here, and I think we've got to take care of them. This would be a step in the right direction to help take care of it, alleviate the problem, smooth it out if we can.
All right. Any other questions by council members?
My question will be, because since 2011, and we are 2017 right now, why we had to make a payment plan agreement, three more years to pay for this money when they should have been paid? Because they're using more than they should, you know, it puts the city, I mean, we are letting them use the water for free, and they're not paying, and we're giving three more years to them.
We've used a similar approach in the past, so I think we did, we did--
Can you please just clarify again? The water is, they're paying for their water, and they're paying for their sewer. What they're being charged with here is their entitlement for an increased use of that. So I just don't, I don't want to miscommunicate that they've had three years of free water. It's just what they're paying, what they're required to pay into the overall system, so. But your point stands, why are we financing this versus letting them pay for?
We've done this in the past. In 2012, I know we did five of them, and I'm not sure how many over the last, you know, couple decades we've done this, but it's been normal practice for the city to do this. I mean, in my perspective, you know, $40,000, significant amount of money, just for that capacity. This is at a time when a business owner also wants to expand their business and build, you know, new construction, that kind of thing. So I think that's the real reason from our perspective. It's, this is a connection fee. This money gets collected and set aside for specific capital projects. And so, you know, there's, I guess precedent, and there's reason to try and work with these business owners. I mean, not everyone can come in and show up with this kind of money. In the event it was a brand-new business owner, you might be someone who's just getting into a building, who wants to convert it and do something different, and they're, you know, pinching pennies to get their business up and running. And so they're asking for some kind of payment plan, if you will. And we just try to be very proactive with them. We would do the same if it was a residential customer who, you know, if someone needed to pay their connection fee to build their own home, we would do things like defer as many connection fees until they get their certificate of occupancy as we can, to free up as much cash as possible during the construction process. They're just things we've tried to do to kind of keep the harmony and help business owners, property owners, as they're doing their business here in Calistoga.
Yeah, and I think that's a good tradition and one we should continue. It might cost us a couple of bucks on interest and a few things like that, but I think it's well worth the little extra money we're spending to help our citizens and our business.
And the risk is low, because we have the leverage of shutting off the water or sewer, or we lean your property, so it's not, there's not a lot of risk to it.
I have a question for, just to belabor this even a little bit more. The connection fee is the connection fee that exists today, not the connection fee that would, the applicant would have paid in 2011 or 2010?
Connection fee today.
So it's a little bit more than he would have paid if he'd have did it in '11?
So that's his penalty.
Yeah, we got him.
Well, you know, there is, there should be some give and take in this.
Sure.
And I think both sides are trying to be as magnanimous as possible and make it easy for people to do business and own a home in this town. It's hard enough the way it is, and if we can help as a city council, we should.
Any other questions for council? All right, it's not a public hearing. If anyone have any questions in this matter?
Oh, question.
Yes, sir. Please approach the podium, should you so choose.
My name is Tony.
You have to come to the podium, sir, because we're on TV.
Sorry.
Please share your name and address, should you so choose.
Yeah, I noticed all you folks up there are drinking filtered water, and I guess my question is, have you ever thrown caution in the wind and tried to take a drink right out of the tap?
Absolutely.
I drink tap water at home all the time.
Okay. I'll say a prayer for you guys when I--
Thank you for your concern. We appreciate that. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the comment, bring it back for the council's consideration. We'll entertain a motion as presented.
I move item number six on the consent calendar.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Barnes. We have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item number seven. Item number seven is consideration and approval of an impact fee payment agreement between the City of Calistoga and Dan Ferris Construction. The recommended action this evening is to authorize the city manager to approve the agreement. Councilmember Kraus, you asked for this one.
Yes, I did. I'm just looking at this, and I understand this is the creation of an additional apartment?
He's already received an entitlement to do that. This is just his payment of his, these are impact fees, these are different, but this is the actual payment of the fee.
But this is to make two apartments out of one? Okay. Have we inspected this property?
For the second unit? We've been there, we've been there before. He's not constructed the second unit to this point.
He hasn't gone ahead and proceeded without benefit of a permit? And we're sure that all of the submittal is to scale?
I will assure you that it is.
Okay. So I need to know.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Not seeing any, bring it back to the council for consideration as presented. I just asked, is there anyone who I would like to speak on this? Please, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Carrie Abreu, well, in light of Dan Ferris, no offense that he's got himself in a little ring doing some other development, when, when, the way that that reads is that he's going to take one apartment and make it two, does that mean he's adding another bathroom? Because, or is an apartment with two bathrooms? And where, and then what that goes with is, so there's a whole other, like, having two apartments rather than one, is there a different recommendation for, like Gary said, that piece of property where you can just start adding apartments, even though they weren't originally in his plan?
So this particular property at the end of Washington Street, because I've been down there, when he built it originally, he projected turning it into two units, so it was built as such, but he didn't get it permitted for two units. So now what he, so he didn't have to pay that impact fee. So now, he wants to turn it into two, and now he's got to pay the impact fee.
I think his dad used to live in that apartment.
Oh.
His dad was alive.
He's got like two units upstairs and commercial down, yeah.
Okay.
So it was built for that purpose at some point, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion. We adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. There are no public hearings. We're moving on to the last item, which is item number eight, general government. Consideration of a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments to the Planning Commission, Active Transportation Advisory Committee, and Napa County Mosquito Abatement Board. Specifically, under the Planning Commission, we have three openings. We had four applicants. Having spoken to all of them, I am recommending reappointment of Commissioner Wilks, Commissioner McNair, and Commissioner Abernathy. I have spoken to the fourth applicant, have encouraged him to stay involved and engaged, and he understands. So with that said, we'll take these one at a time. Is that okay, Kathy? Do you need them all at once?
Um, it's one, it's one at a time.
Okay, then we'll move on to the ATAC committee. ATAC committee, we had, I'm going to get to the right place here. Under ATAC, we had three seats available. We had four applicants. My recommendation is to reappoint Dieter Deiss, to reappoint, sorry, to appoint Sophie Gulling, and then to newly appoint John Glazer. I spoke to the fourth applicant listed here, David Hagberg, and he understands and is happy to participate in other endeavors and adventures inside of Calistoga. So those would be the three. And then on to the Mosquito Abatement Board. Our representative, who happens to be the president of that board for the county this year, is Shelby Valentine. So I'm making those recommendations for your consideration, and we'll entertain any discussion on that matter. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, we'll bring it back to the council, and I'll entertain that motion as presented. I should say, I will make that motion as presented.
I will second that motion as presented.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I thank them in advance for their continued service. Thank you all. And with that said, we will adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting, December 19, with the caveat that that may, meeting may end up canceled for a lack of agendized items. Thank you all. Have a good evening.